Jeff sent out an email, I think it was last week, about the committees that we needed to appoint people to. Below in your packet are the suggestions, the suggested ones. I said that's not set in stone if anybody wants to say, hey, I think this person or this person. We just tried to indicate the person that kind of goes with the third department the best. So, I don't know if anyone had any thoughts with it because we are going to go on that later this meeting. So I didn't know if anyone wanted any changes or what anyone's thoughts were or hey, we think we should have this person or what do you think? So for Blight, it says it has to be, what is it, exempt?
It's gotta be an executive.
The executive.
So he wants people up and he's saying.
Yeah, four to be on Blight. So we either make Steve or Jeff be on Blight, right Steve?
Jeff should be reading on Thursday.
Or you make.
Make Cheryl exempt.
Or you make Cheryl exempt.
Make your executive and she can be on Blight.
So that's up, I didn't know how we want to, anyone's thoughts?
What does it entail? I don't even know what you're.
So it's basically going to the Blight meetings, hearing their input from the code office. I mean, in theory, it'd make more sense to have someone from the code office go because they're dealing with. So it makes sense for someone from the code office to go, but because unless you make her exempt and.
If you make her exempt, then that takes away her voice.
No, 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 exempt meaning she's a salary employee.
Salary employee, forty hours of paycheck.
Yeah, so if she works forty, forty-five or twenty-five, you pay the same regardless. But, I mean, we don't have to make that one.
And she would be, she'd meet the ordinance criteria.
So, I mean, other than that one, does anyone have any opposition to any other of the delegates that are for those committees? Like I said, we tried to do it for.
Josh, the CRS Blight coordinator, I did that in my prior life here.
Okay, I mean, we could put, if you want to go on that, sure, we can.
I don't, I mean, I don't know who at SMA would do it other than.
Me, that's fine. He volunteered himself right now. No, sure, if you want to do it, we just didn't, it just made sense, but if you want to do it, that's fine.
I mean, I did it before. If SMA can do it, I haven't read what it said. I don't know if we're gonna do it other than flood control.
Who's on, what's, uh, link right now, a guy running the flood control.
Pat.
Who's on Chester?
Pat.
Pat, thank you. I would take a talk to Pat.
He's got two real good guys down there too.
Yeah.
He's got two real good guys down there too.
Not to Cheryl, but I.
But they are part of the.
The system, right, so we didn't, we had.
So we can just say, hey, we'll see if someone from municipal authority sends on.
And that's fine.
Yeah, well, you know, to be named, which is fine, okay. Anyone else on the.
Yeah.
Wait, so are you trying to make the somebody from the municipal authority the CRS coordinator?
Yeah.
But that was, that was with the city before. They work with, they work with the municipal authority, but that wasn't with the city.
Well, like I said, we can leave it with the city. It's just, we said we tried to put it towards what'd make the most sense, like whoever wants to do it, can do it. So it doesn't really matter. We just tried to throw this together to make sense.
Well, I think it would make sense if it was with the city before it should, for me.
Okay, then we gotta find a person to do it.
Joe? Tell me who's doing it. My problem is Joe, he's twenty hours in a day. He should throw it on Cheryl.
All right, so Cheryl, you're good with that?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
He's consolidation fire department, Cheryl. I wonder who's a suggestion, Derek, because he's a, they're on a.
And Jim, I don't have a problem with that. If Derek's willing to take it.
I mean, he's been there since we started, two years ago, I guess.
And I don't have to do a lot of catching up. And I'm perfectly fine with that. I mean, I can go to the meetings and sit in and listen and maybe someone from the city there. But if Derek's willing to take it, he's welcome to it.
That's fine. I mean, the fire department still wanted me to help them out and be involved and talk to them about things anyway, so that's fine. I have no problem with that.
Thank you. They're just working on consolidation, consolidation order. His duties are done.
Any other issues, not issues, suggestions for the committees? All right, we're good? Can we move on? All right, so I guess moving on, I guess number two and four can kind of go together. Grant writer position, like a psychotscopist, what my vision was, like having someone at a base salary with benefits and having like a commission based off of what grants that commission can apply to.
The amount of the grant.
What?
The amount of.
Yeah, so that way, you know, kind of gives them, hey, this is your base salary, but gives them an incentive to go find different grants and things like that. So I didn't know where everyone's thoughts were on it and things like that, but you know.
Well, right now, we have, I think there's twenty-four grants out there. And basically Steve, out of the twenty-four, probably about twenty-two of them involve jury departments.
Yes.
And we're not all active.
No.
Uh, some are still in waiting for an answer, yes or no, the receiver denied.
Yeah, there are some that are just getting finished up, some of that are currently being utilized and others that are working on.
And the big one is the thirty-three point two motion. That's might be at least three years down the road. My concern is right now, we have issues on the table. Not being taken care of. There's some items that have to be completed on.
Yeah, please work on them. We're on top of that.
Uh, you know, my thing is, of course, right now Steve is working his side of the department and so forth. The only reason I'm, Derek should continue with those grants because it isn't one of these deals you walk in there and we're dealing with the state and also the federal government. You don't learn as you go. When those folks call and ask you for a question or the, the answer or something. They expect that. They don't say, well, take your time, get back to us in six months or whatever. And that grant, we're trying to have it finalized, Steve, by the end of the year. And what's asked to be, because we're running well for bids, the Susquehanna Phase Two, which is a major part of that expansion project. Excuse me, I think Susquehanna. We don't want to try to find somebody, bring them in and say, here, you have twenty-four grants, learn as you go, but that's going to be disastrous.
So what about all the other grants? Like that one you didn't apply for.
We have two issues. The main issue right now is the twenty-four grants is on the table.
Correct.
Okay, that's the one I'm concerned about. Writing new grants, that's secondary.
No, I, I mean, honestly, I think, I think they go both hand in hand because yes, the twenty-four grants are important, but we can't stop doing new business in grants because those old twenty-four.
I'm not saying it, but if you find somebody that can write grants, let them start over here.
Okay.
The twenty-four grants, we've made a decision now, so we can continue.
So, no, I get what you're saying. So what's your suggestion by keeping, keeping the old moving, but also getting new going?
Well, we almost have made the decision first, keeping the new or the existing going. That's the one answer, the one question has to be answered.
And finish up what was started, is that right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Because Steve and Derek and our engineers have worked together for years now. And this is what I feel if we continue, so nothing is wrong. We lose that three point two million dollar grant, Susquehanna probably never get done.
Well, that's the thing. If we screw these grants up and ruin our communication and everything that we've been doing and the flow of what we've been doing, if we lose that, then that impedes what we're going to get for future grants. Right now, we have an amazing track record in this city, better than any other city around here on how we organize, how we walk in professionally and approach, approach these politicians with lined up and ready to go grants. And we've repeatedly been told by those people that the people that award the grants, that we stand head and shoulders above everybody on that. So I'd like to see that excellence continue because frankly, it's the only way we're getting our streets done here.
No, I get that. I'm sorry, I don't think anyone's disagreeing with that. It's just like, how do you get both to play at the same time? Because we're gonna, so you're saying we should have two people at the same time? Doing the old and then new person coming in, wants the older out, then they're go away? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so.
That's, that's wasn't my understanding though. My understanding was if we have, you know, we make a position or contract with somebody, we do grant management and ongoing grants. Well, like ongoing grants, but also new grants.
As I, as I say, new position for do ongoing and new, but I understand what Jim's saying is also. But you know, at the same time, we have to have, we have to be looking at, we just look at the same grants. There's new, there's other grants out there that we haven't applied for that we need to be applying for small ones as well. So are we.
Here again, once you make a decision on the existing grants with Derek, then we turn right around there and see what kind of deal we can make on.
Well, I said, but okay, but what's, what's going to be the salary? Yes, we have to figure all this stuff out because we just can't say, all right, we're going to hire Derek and then, all right, we'll figure out the new grant writer a month from now because we're going to lose opportunities as well.
Well, Joel isn't here right now.
It's, it's in the contract.
Yeah.
It, it, it's in there.
It was a twelve thousand dollar figure for the existing?
Correct, for the existing grants. Then as those grants go away, the existing ones, that twelve thousand dollars drops by, if five grants leave this, say it's this year after this year, and you wanted to renew next year. And five of those grants go away, they drop by five hundred twenty-one dollars and seventy-four cents per grant as far as that twelve thousand dollar fee. So that drops to whatever that is, I didn't do that math. Then all the new grants would go off of an admin fee that's provided by the grant itself, as long as that grant allows for an admin fee. So a lot of the.
That's the new though.
That's the new ones moving forward. So that moves away from paying, we'll say, a set rate because the old grants does not allow for, we didn't put in for admin fees when I was here because we just didn't have to. So you have to account for the ones that we currently have somehow to pay someone. So moving forward, if you work in the admin costs into the grant application itself, state, state one specifically, will allow for a two percent, most of them, a two percent admin fee. So if you work that into the grant, the grant can pay for the admin fee and/or the match portion of it. So the city could still be on the hook for a match portion of that admin, but not the entire admin. But the city notoriously has gotten matching funds from outside of city funds, which would pay for those admin fees. That would be the two percent as well.
But the existing twenty-four, basically, it's five hundred dollars.
Twenty-three, but yeah.
Oh, okay. But that, the twelve thousand covers those.
Correct.
Now, we're not going fiscal year, we're running whatever we decide to kind of.
Correct, 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 yes.
Now, let's say, excuse, October first, okay?
Okay.
And that grant, we got notification October second. That, it's no, we, we didn't get it, okay?
Yeah.
Well, you didn't get no five hundred dollars.
Well, then, I mean, so you could take those out of, because I wanted to include that in because if you do get them. If you don't include that in there, you would have to go buy hourly. Hourly, paying someone hourly, if you do get them, is going to be more expensive than paying someone for the twelve thousand. So that's why I added to the twelve thousand, because if the city does get it, you're going to be, it's cheaper to pay in that twelve thousand cost estimate because it's five hundred twenty-one dollars seventy-four cents per grant versus paying someone an hourly rate. Those are only really your two options.
Okay, but we made the little two come, okay? I'm just worried about the twelve thousand, the twenty-three grants and the twelve thousand. This is where we have to continue. Steve, am I correct?
Okay, how about this? We pay Derek to continue, listen, hear me out, to finish the grants up. Once all twenty-three are closed out at whatever rate we want to choose to. While in the meantime, we do have, in my opinion, we should hire someone, be looking for new grants and new things that we haven't gotten in the past or that we have applied for in the past. While Derek's still seeing the old grants out, the new person would come in with the salary base, with the commission to do on the new grants, to do all these things that we haven't done in the past.
That's something we can look at.
Well, we, we, we have to look at them at the same time, but we can't say, all right, Derek, can you see these grants through? And then we're going to figure out the new grant writer six months from now because, I'm just making a number up. Two months from now, because we lost two months of when grants are open to apply for things. Like they have to work hand in hand. We just can't say, well, the new grant writer in that position can wait because it can't because there are grants that are open now that we can be applying for and getting money for all the departments. It's like, you know, like facade grants or Blight grants or Shade Street grants or police grants or stuff for code or streets, like new stuff that we haven't applied for. Like they have to go hand in hand. We just can't say, oh, all ones are in priority right now.
Question, percentages, that comes out of the grant.
Yeah, as it says, the grant, that'd be the grant administration fee, for whatever grant it can be applied to.
And it comes right out of that grant.
Yeah, so that way, you know, it gives a person incentive, hey, you know, if it's only a hundred thousand dollar grant, I'm just making a number up here. Hey, if I get multiple, there we go. It gives an incentive to actually go out and find different grants that we don't apply for. Because you know, there's grants out there for like McDonald's, Burger King, Target, Walmart, Giant, Nike, whatever, that we don't look into. There's stuff out there that can help all departments, whether they're big or small.
It's not a guarantee, like grants like that will have an admin cost attached to it. But yeah, because like those are foundation grants, normally they don't have an admin.
Yeah, but I said, that's, that's covering this, like the city base fee is covering that. It's like, those are grants that we need to be looking for, that we don't look for, that we haven't looked for in the past. Like every little, a couple of thousand dollars here and there in each department, all adds up after a while.
The only thing I would suggest, Josh, is not rush into that moving ahead with, hey, we're going to, we're going to allocate X amount of money for a grant writer at this time for future grants. I'd say, let's, let's beat the idea around a little bit and everybody think about it for two weeks. And see if they're a little bit outside the box. Like, could we do something where your department supervisor starts looking for grants?
But I mean.
And leave, and leave them pumped up and, 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 and work in that fashion.
I don't know. Like I said, I'm just thinking outside the box instead of having somebody segregate out there on their own.
Because like the chief knows his department better than anyone. And he's going to know, hey, do you put Brad, somebody in charge of that, looking for those things that your regular grant writer would know. I would know more about highway stuff to look for and, and John would know, you know, John's guys, Cheryl would know more. Hey, these are things that we can get that manage different areas here. I'm just saying, maybe just think about that.
No, I.
Start rushing into somebody new. It's not going to hurt for two weeks to go without a grant writer. You know what I mean? It isn't like it's going to find something in the next two weeks. Say, think about it, because in the long term, look for a long-term solution that might not be exactly inside the box. Like Jeff probably has a ton of ideas somewhere to go with grants, just on the sods of the community and that type of stuff.
But you know how it is, he like, you know, you guys are under staff, you're out there working along with the guys, like, when are you going to have time to do that? You know, when are, you know, like, what are they going to, like, everyone already has, we're already under staff in all departments. Now we're saying, hey, now you're in charge of writing your own grants and managing your own grants, like.
Well.
Like I think.
And if we're something that we could beat it around, then we could say, okay, well then, then we, we do it in conjunction with this centralized grant writer. Maybe that's, maybe that goes back to Derek's or centralized grant writer, we work out a deal just.
But when is he going to have time? He's down there working. We work from eight to four thirty. He's working from eight to four thirty.
Well, I did do normally forty-five, fifty hours at least a week for the city itself. So now that I only have to work forty hours down there.
So when are you going to have the forty hours? Because you work the same time when we work, so when.
I, I do a lot of work at home.
Okay, but when are you going to have time to meet with Steve or Cheryl or Travis if you're working down there? Like, how would that work? Because you're, I mean.
Well, that's what I'm saying, maybe, maybe it isn't even Derek, maybe it's somebody else. But somewhere that we put a feedback that going forward, I mean, we have a good format right now. We have a good track record right now. And that's why I'm hesitant to screw with that.
Oh, no, I agree.
It's, how can we augment it, make it better and make it more efficient and make, and make it more, maybe it is a little more involved with supervising, whatever.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree.
I'm just saying, let's not throw a baby out in the bath water here. You got a good thing working, let's try to.
But what I don't want to do, like, we're already a month without a grant writer, now it's going to be another, we wait two weeks, then we advertise. So we're going to be going two and a half months without someone there. We already lost all this opportunity. There's grants open right now that we don't even look at. And that's why I'm saying, I don't want to lose time here and say, all right, we're going to kick the can down the road. But I said, I think you're right. We have to have.
Let's, let's, let's hybrid things. Think, think about things, get a little bit outside the box thinking on it. How can we take what we have existing that is really working well? And now that Derek's moved on, is there some way we can tweak, does it involve Derek, doesn't involve Derek? And we go, no. Well, let's kind of brainstorm for two weeks and think about it. That would be my only suggestion. And I'm not accounting for you guys, we just want to sit and work session. I'm just going to suggest.
What you're saying is, you know, the grants that we were talking, the twenty-three grants, like I said, the high percentages, they all belong to street department and working with the authority. Him working for the authority out.
It makes, it makes that much better because we're already.
Pardon?
He's going to have a cross on his.
Right, because he'll be writing grants for the authority and us.
Contract agreement with, with the authority, we're responsible to write grants for the authority, so.
The thing about these, these, these grants that we have on the table now, these are ones that repeat ones that we applied for this project, this project.
Yeah.
This is where something like he should stay in that sector of grants.
Yeah, even if we just like separated it out for, hey, he's doing green light, oh, he's doing, I'll say grants, he's doing all the other.
But what happens, I mean, once again, let's have, let's say Derek moves on to a better position, he's not there anymore. Then we're, let's square one again, not knowing what to do.
It's a great atmosphere down there. I'm really enjoying it. I don't plan on leaving.
Well, Derek, you only been there for a couple of weeks.
And I can already tell the difference.
And I'm glad, and I'm glad everything was great, but we have, as we said before, we have to have people ready to step in if something happens to someone. Like you, Steve, you have Craig ready to step in, but you.
You're talking about things that have to happen on a daily basis. Like a grant writer doesn't have things that have to happen on a daily basis once you get, once you, you know what I mean? If you're just out looking for grants, I mean, we all see our, these grants hit our inboxes constantly with grant writer associations and all kinds of different grants that hit. And, and there, there is a large amount out there, but it's also, you have to be targeted as to what you do and not just, you know, throw regards all over the wall. You got to target it in and then work your way in. And that's what I'm saying, I think the supervisors getting the, getting the, writing out a standard operating procedure on how grants are chased, instead of just throwing a big net out there trying to catch nine thousand different grants. Because there's, there's thousands.
Yeah, there are.
Okay, this is where the idea should flow out of the departments to, to your central grant writer.
Correct.
And then say, okay, here's what, here's what we're going to do. That's what we've been doing with the street department and doing with their, and it's working very, very well in what we've done. And that's what I'm saying, we just need to continue to flow that way. But again, thinking outside the box, bringing in your supervisors and bring them out and say, like.
What do you mean, ask them what?
Say, here's a whole bunch of different grants, what do you think should we add? And talk to the supervisor, he knows the.
A hundred percent agree. And as you said, having one centralized person.
Correct.
That's what I'm saying, glad you have one centralized person.
I think when we interview people, we should make sure that they're familiar and have done grants along those same lines. That way, when it comes time for them to step in, they know exactly what they're doing.
And you can have each department make a wish list?
Yeah, and then as I, as I, yeah, Steve said, like, here's my wish list, we're having good communication.
Well, it'd be, it'd be the grant writer presenting to each department saying, here's this group, here's this five hundred different grants that are out there.
What are you thinking?
Here's the likelihood of what you can get.
Yeah.
Where do you think your department needs it the most, you know, whether it's, whether it's applying for something for the. Then we'll take it back to the grant writer, that's what I'm going to say, Jim.
Yeah, a hundred percent agree.
Probably one time.
But, remember they firmly hired him about two, three years ago.
Yeah, they took our money and didn't do anything.
But they gave the money back, nevermind, so.
Exactly.
They had that wish list, they were, money was going to come into a festival, we can't count it.
There's a lot of spoke here.
And that's why, like, having a person in-house that we can oversee, like, hey, you're not, I'm just making this up. You're not doing what you're supposed to. You're not, as you said, Steve, you're not having a communication, you're not meeting with these all, all departments. Like, here's the wish list of grants, which one do you want? All right, I'll go back. Like, like I said, hasn't been done, so.
In all honesty, maybe, I, I want to just, just for my department, this is my opinion, you guys, and you guys are council people. What we have has been refined over the last seven years. It has worked. It has brought millions of dollars into the streets. It's brought millions of dollars into municipal party building the infrastructure that is desperately needed to be repaired. I am begging council, don't screw with it. Find some way to augment in there that we can maintain doing what we've been doing. If you guys want to do something where we expand in different directions with different things, I'm fine with that. I'm just saying, please, there's no other way. Our streets are a disaster. Our pipes are a disaster. Twenty-one water leaks over, over the course of the winter last winter. These are going to continue to happen until we upgrade pipes. When we upgrade pipes, it costs a million dollars to block. I get two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year to do all my streets, all my, everything I do, salt trucks, everything. I can't do without grants. So what I'm telling you is, we got something that's working. We have grants and we have jobs scheduled out for the next five years. Which is something that took seven years to get to this point, and we're finally getting shit done. Please don't screw with it. That's all I'm asking.
Well, why don't we do this, Jim? Let me hear your thoughts on this. We pay Derek the twelve grand to finish out these twenty-three grants. At the same time, we start advertising for a grant writer, so the processes keep going. So they learn the process with Steve, with Derek, in the process. So when the person gets hired, as they're talking about those grants, they're learning the methods, the ways to keep the train rolling in that direction. So that way, you know, as grants start to close, they know how to close it, as they're working, they know how to work it. So that the new person learns how to do it in the process. So we're not, sure not leading, so like I said.
Kind of shows there will be.
In a sense, yes, how, as you said, Steve, so the train keeps moving, the methods keep going, there's nothing changing.
Yeah, we start the meeting every two weeks.
So they see how it goes.
That has to be there, every one of those.
And at the same time, we get the person hired to learn those ways. As you said, Steve, there's one centralized person coming back to all departments with the grants saying, I'm just making it. Here are the top ten grants, which one do you think will work for all departments, not just the streets? And in that way, things are rolling. In the same meantime, you, as you said, they're learning from Derek, Peter Guy's methods to incorporate throughout everywhere else.
But that said, we still have to delay on Derek to write new grants because it'll be coming up, there's something coming up, what's coming up here?
But that goes back with the new person learning alongside of them.
But yes, as.
But eventually we have to transition out.
Right, as he's writing a new grant, let's say in October.
The new, the new grant writer, that's technically their grant, but he's helping them write it in the process under what is in here.
Providing we can find one.
Well, like I said, we, we can't, we can't find one if you start advertising. So I mean, did everyone have a chance to look over like the rest, like the job description, Joel looked over, he didn't see any issues with it? Does anyone have any issues with that or what are you guys thinking? So like their job description, the responsibilities, whatever. So at least we can get it advertised.
You're saying of the grant writer.
The new grant.
New grant writer.
Josh, can I just add something?
Cheryl, yes, you can.
Okay. Okay, grant writer finds ten grants, but they should really flush them out because they, they could say to Steve, oh, Steve, this will work perfect to buy a new truck, but somewhere in the grant guidelines it says, street departments can apply.
Well, that, that goes back to the grant writer having to look further.
Right, they have to flush them. They have to do a little more than just say.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're not just saying, oh, here's the link, apply for, no, they're actually looking and say, hey, this one's matching, this one's not matching. This is ten percent, this is twenty, this is fifty, and taking it back to each department and then bringing it back to say, okay.
Well, I mean, that's what we did on the corner to discuss and how grants, and see what can we use for what, for where, for how, for what, for when. And that's how we've gotten to the point where we're applying for green light of multi-modal, we're applying.
And that way, then there's not cross wanting a grants, like, I'm just making this up here, like, you want this one, but deep, I mean, code wants this one also. They're not fighting, I'm just.
You're only going to fight them.
No, but I'm.
Just understand that. These grants, some of them are going to be applicable to multiple departments, including municipal party. Which is one of the good things that we have, is, is we've tried to broker that piece between us and municipal party to work together as, as witnessed by Reagan Street, Susquehanna Avenue and that type of thing that we've done is saying, hey, listen, we have to work cooperatively together on these because these grants will pull both ways for both municipal party. And again, we're actually obligated to provide grant, grant writing for municipal, that is in our contract with them.
Okay, so any question?
The number we were discussing here two weeks ago.
For which portion?
For the grant writer.
So we were discussing a higher salary, like, things like between forty, fifty, based on experience. But this is like more of an incentive base, like, all right, you get a base salary for this, but you know, whatever grants that you can apply to commission and admin fee to, you get that also. So it's kind of like an incentive base, like, hey, I'm looking for not just the big ones, but the small ones too as well. That was like the theory behind it, but like I said, that was just something, my thoughts. I'm not saying that's the best way, but I think someone who has incentive to try to find more, but.
My, so, in the contract that was proposed though, it's proposed to do ongoing grant management and new grants.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I agree with the ongoing because as Steve said, it's good to have that. But I also think we've got to have new eyes looking for new grants, as, you know, as you guys said, like twenty-four, twenty-two are for the street department. I mean, last year, like, I mean, we all know that the police department's the highest budgeted, and to think, we got thirty-five thousand dollars. Like, we have to, like I said, we got, like, there's, there's grants out there for Blight for the code. There's many grants out there for parks and rent that we're just not, that we're not looking at. I mean, I think we need new eyes to do that.
What grants are out there for Blight? Just curious.
Well, Schmucken got one, I think, two years ago for Blight.
That was CDBJ.
Okay, so like, you're telling me there's only one opportunity out there, like, like facade grants?
What I'm saying is.
Like facade grants, we didn't get any facade grants.
Our priorities for funding aren't always the state and federal. Our priorities for funding aren't always the state and federal government's priority of funding. And some of the foundations that you mentioned, like the McDonald's, the Giants, everything like that, they go for five oh one C threes, they don't go for taxing bodies. Taxing body, as soon as you're a taxing body, you are negated from a lot of grants because you're a taxing body. They like five oh one C threes, that's where the partnerships with ASRI and everything comes into play, or they can go for certain grants that municipality cannot to do certain projects. Now, as far as Blight and everything goes, you are looking at mostly CDBG. I've had this conversation with Ken. Facade, we've gone over the.
Yeah, but we haven't gotten, we haven't applied for any, we haven't even get to close, that's insane, we need new eyes, like, the police department, like, we got thirty-five thousand dollars last year.
But we've also applied for some that don't, it takes longer than a year, most of the time, a year.
I understand that, but like, why aren't we looking for more, like, correct me if I'm wrong, like, Derek, we had an email back and forth saying, oh, I just typed it in the search engine. Like, they're going to classes, they're, they're answering their salaries.
Because literally, they, because literally, there is a search engine.
I get it, but like, when are you gonna have time to do this? Like, you're working down there when we're working, so when are you gonna meet with the supervisors? Cause we're working the same hours. So when are you gonna meet with the departments, like, when are you gonna meet with Code, when they're here from eight to four? When are you gonna meet with Steve when they're here from seven to three thirty? What, like, when are those meetings gonna take place? Cause you're working when we're working, like, how's that gonna happen?
Well, something I'm gonna add there, and I'm just throwing them out there, I would like to have the opportunity to manage around the grants in my department. And I'd be willing to do that for negotiation purposes. Just putting it out there, council. I didn't something this man.
Now, if we're gonna do that.
That's a separate question, I mean, that's.
Now, that's a whole other separate question, now, here's the thing, now.
Well, this is why I was trying to say, let's, let's talk outside the box for two weeks and do this, but we.
You know what, I, I pull my, I, I pull my, uh, my offer, you guys enjoy trying to figure it out.
Okay.
In totality.
I like what you're thinking.
Just saying.
Cheryl, how do you?
I mean, we might have to attend some classes, attend some training.
Or, I was saying, Cheryl, how would you feel someone in your department doing that? Or John?
Let's back up there once. What did you say, Derek?
Um, the, managing the current ones and offer for the future, I'm pulling it. You guys can figure it out.
What's wrong here?
What?
Why could you change your mind?
The conversation, the whole conversation, and I'm just pulling it.
What, what part of the conversation?
Everything, I, I think the, it, it's a, I was doing it because I wanted to continue helping the city in, in general. But clearly, everything that, some of the conversations that things were steered toward, um, I think it's best that I don't and you guys can, you know, move forward and figure out how to manage and do that stuff.
There's a, we're concerned that we have to finish these twenty-three grants up.
I, honestly, I, I understand, I understand the, the concern, but I think it's, it's best that, you know, the city and.
But even if you're just stuck around just to help us transition to it, to what's something different, that's what I'm trying to say is.
I, 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 I understand, but.
Folks thought you're gonna finish out the grants and that's it, and that's what I'm saying, moving ahead in the future. If you could help us with managing some of it.
Or add that work that, Steve.
Hmm, but I, but the offer wasn't just for that, and then the, the conversation that just, just happened is, uh, not, not at this time.
So, John, Cheryl, do you feel as if you, Cheryl, someone in the department would be the grant writer? Kind of feeling, yeah, and the code office, so like, Steve, then you went into. So you're okay with going down there? Steve, you're okay with that? Yeah, yeah, I, I just wanna get, like.
It's a thousand bucks.
You're just probably getting off on a, you have some experience, because Travis, he's gonna really be locked in looking for these.
Well, I looked, it's.
Yeah, no, that's not easy, that's, that's why, and I don't want that, that's why I would love Derek to stay on.
I don't know, I don't know what's wrong here, cause if he walks away, it's on you.
No, 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 it's not, it's not on Steve, I wanna make that clear, that is not on Steve, you not put that on Steve's shoulders.
Well, now, it's, you also just pulled an offer to continue helping, but it's gonna burden a lot of people, and burden, so like, with the new person, he said he wanted a higher grant. To just hope, so like, now that they're on Steve's shoulders, can't help.
I think everybody's voting, all right, let's just table this, let's, let's, let's. I'm just saying, let's.
That's what I'm saying, that's what I'm doing, cause.
That's, that's issue, that's fine. But still, we have the issue of the table.
Derek, well, wait, what is offer, I don't know what, I mean.
We can stop both from a conference.
All right, moving on to that, so, with the public relations officer, is going to replace that? I know this is over, great day, I mean, in there also is a job description for that, I know you talked about moving Robin into that position with the, with the raising compensation and going into town.
We really, you guys discussed that, I got a question on the table.
Yes.
Jody, I'm sorry, this is conversation. Two meetings ago, whatever it was, you were talking about, you asked us for ten thousand towards downtown manager, am I correct?
Downtown management program.
Okay, where does that stand?
I submitted the letter requesting, and so it's what you.
No, I, no, I meant.
What do you mean?
On your side, I'm sorry.
So we're hiring a downtown manager this month, we are going to be applying for Main Street designation sometime within probably the next six months. And the Main Street program has expenses in addition to paying the salary of the downtown manager. There are other things to consider, like organizing events, marketing, promotions, so the, actually, your ten thousand dollar would go to the program, not specifically to the salary. If that makes sense.
Well, I know Josh had a, uh, suggestion regarding local businesses being, maybe on a weekly or monthly basis, I'd say. Spoke to and asked what problems they have, I know Jim, they asked you about your business downtown and so forth.
That's part of what the downtown manager does.
But it's not just, I mean, nothing against downtown manager, but it's not just about this, this position, it's not just downtown. We have a whole entire city, like, we have the fourth, the fourth street corridor up there, we have citizens that need to have someone to go to and ask for problems, be out meeting with problems. It's like Jim had an issue up there on Ray Street about the lines that Steve got fixed for. Like, this person is interacting with the public as a whole, not just the downtown businesses, not just businesses in general.
Well, if you tell somebody and, and you advertise, anybody in the city, someone has a problem, call this person, that's all they ever get done?
That's all they, I mean, that's all that happens now, they call the front office, they call where to go, where to go. So like, we're, we're getting centralized to one person to deal with these issues, so Steve doesn't have to deal with, hey, what is rush pickup? You know, this perfect, like, we need to start getting out there and gaining the trust of.
I mean, most, most of my supply calls that I did.
I missed you that many.
There are inquiries that only we can kind of answer, I mean, like, part of it is, hey, we have rush, this and this and this. You know, we get a couple hundred calls a month, we get on different things, but then it's also questions about, and, and, and it just, it almost always relates to us going out there, meeting individually with the resident. But, I mean, I, I don't know what a third party's gonna, gonna do.
You said more than what, they call the city hall, then the city hall.
Yeah, I hate when, yeah, it, cause, cause what ends up happening is, is if you, if you continue, like, you wanna go, it's like a single payer system, it's like anything, single point of contact. You wanna have a single point of contact when you're dealing with a specific problem, cause every layer that you add in there adds, adds more friction to the process and, and just makes it worse. What I'm saying is, the people need to be directed to us, I mean, our home system absolutely sucks, it needs to be thrown away, and we need to go back to having direct outnumbered each department. That needs, that needs happening, cause people, I can't tell you how many messages I get every day saying, I don't know if this is the right department or not, and it's, we just have a really shitty home system.
Yeah, but I'm not saying that, but like, we still have to have some type of public relations officer or individual to deal with the public and what's going on. Putting out, hey, what's going on, or what are we doing, things like that, to meet with businesses for the city. Like, the biggest, but, but that's SRI, like, what happens if they're out in fourth street, up in fourth street? Because not, not, nothing against, like, I'm not, nothing against.
No, but they'll be supportive of all small businesses, and so we have the Thanks Sunbury Business Association, which you actually started it, but I haven't seen you there in years.
I started Thanks Sunbury?
You, you started the business association, the meet and greet, right?
Yeah, you and.
We talked about, we talked about it, and then we said, let's make it a regular thing, so SRI said, we'll facilitate it. You get the, you get the invitations to the meetings, but I don't see you there.
But it's not just there, I'm talking.
Right, that's your opportunity, you're gonna meet with the business owner.
But, Jody, I just, I don't meet with the businesses just at a meeting, like, I have people call me, I go to.
Of course you don't, but I'm just saying, that's an opportunity where there's a single place that these kind of issues can be brought up. It's like having, like, uh, you know, people talk about, they used to have a merchants' council, and then, you know, the, the mayor or who, councilman might come to that meeting as well.
And the North Fourth, Fourth Street area is included in the business district, SRI asked for that change years ago.
No, I get, so we're, so we're gonna have anyone, so we don't, so we don't think we need to have any type of public relations officer in the city dealing with businesses or going out and communicating with businesses?
No, I think SRI should begin with the businesses and their concerns, if, if you wanna take out somebody, if, uh, I'm trying to think of.
Whoever, whatever.
Has a concern about whatever.
So they should go to SRI, then SRI brings it up.
No, no, they're the only businesses, I'm incorrect, Jody.
So if a business has an issue, who should they go to? That's what I'm asking.
What, I, what kind of issues though?
I, I don't know, I'm just saying.
Is it issues with city, is it issues with city infrastructure, is it issues with city code? Then, yeah, they come to the city, to the appropriate office, department, they get those issues resolved.
So who's, so from the city, so we're gonna have no communication, I'm just talking about a person going out and just talking to businesses, what can the city do for them? We're not gonna have any type of person do that.
They deal with Jim.
Isn't that kind of what you're showing, that's basically what you're gonna, that city manager's gonna do, correct?
So the downtown manager, downtown management program, I mean, I'm sorry, includes small business, communications and support. So yes, any business in town could come to the downtown manager for assistance with, with, with getting to the right department to solve their issue.
Right, they could come to the downtown manager and say, who do I call it, Code? And you could say, yeah, call this number.
And they would write grants for him for facade or whatever they need then also, or?
Well, in the Main Street Matters program, which includes Main Street designation, it also includes facade grants, that, yes. The downtown engine, and in our five-year strategic plan, we have in there some goals and objectives that have to do with going for facade grants, going for, actually, facades are only exterior. There are also other grants in the Main Street Matters program that would help a business do improvements in the interior. And that's all part of that overall program, the revitalization program, the five-year strategic plan that we have.
And with, with them being designated a main street that can move up all the risk to get certain grants. So, you know, like, when we did have facade grant in Sunbury, then, then go to them, it was their bottom line. Because we wouldn't all admire that money in two years, and that made it worth it.
Jim, can I come in on a prior subject real quick? Mine? Okay.
Why did they put a work session?
If I can make a suggestion, not that I have a vote, obviously, but I do have a suggestion. I think this, the best possibility for the future of the city at this point is to ask Derek to do the existing grants for the twelve thousand dollars. Leave everybody else start doing whatever other grants they're willing to do, intervene on, and we see how that process works. At least, at that point, it saves the brands that we have outstanding through Derek, and we will see what can come about through the new idea of allowing people within the different genres to go their own range. Would that, would that be okay with you?
Okay. I think Josh indicated to me that's okay too, and that would be okay.
End up the ones we're getting.
But we gotta make sure that there is a two or three of us went after the same one.
Well, that.
No, he's just, he's just managing the one that.
That has nothing to do with Derek, Derek's gonna be the one that are currently.
No, he means, he means department, is that what you mean, each department?
Let's say we're going after one.
Well, I think.
Each department are gonna go after something different.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to work out something, really, ever done. I'll help you work through the process of figuring out who would go after what. Get set up a standard. Exactly, and that's okay. Derek, would you be willing to do the existing grants for the twelve thousand, not worry about the rest of it, and we'll see where it goes?
Did you say, Derek?
Yes.
I didn't say anything.
I will add this, Derek, please.
How about this, oh, I was gonna say, think about it, we'll come to you convenient two weeks back.
No, I think, I know, I think.
Show me that. Yeah, actually, around town. But did you have a chance to review the contract?
Yeah, I, I would, we made the, we changed, actually, we made the change.
What, yeah.